Call the meeting to order. Well, that didn't work. We'll call the meeting to order. Say it louder.
Welcome to Nixa City Hall. This video is going to provide you with an overview of how the city of Nixa conducts city council meetings. We encourage everyone to attend and participate in city council meetings. This is part of how democracy works at the local level. Listening to the perspectives of subject matter experts, city residents, and other community members helps our elected leaders make more informed decisions. Before we start the meeting, let's review some of council's rules of order. These rules help us make sure our meetings are orderly and efficient while protecting the ability of everyone to have an opportunity to speak. Please be respectful of the person speaking and hold your own comments until it is your turn to speak. Presenters are invited by the council to provide information during the meeting to the council. These are informational presentations only, and nothing will be voted on at the time of the presentation. Presenters are not time limited. There are two times when all other visitors will be able to speak to council. The first is during the visitor's section of the agenda, and the second is during any public hearing regarding an agenda item. During the visitor's section, anyone may speak to council about any topic, whereas the public hearings regarding specific agenda items allow you to make comments for council to consider before they make a decision on that topic. Whether you wish to speak during any public hearing or the visitor's section, the following rules of order will apply. One, only one person should speak at a time. Be respectful of the person speaking and wait to speak until it is your turn. Two, anyone speaking must do so from the podium and speak into the microphone. Three, you must first state your name and provide your address in writing to the city clerk before beginning your comments. Four, all speakers will be given five minutes to make their comments to the council. The mayor or council may have additional questions for speakers after this five-minute period. Five, all comments should be addressed to the mayor and council. Six, if you have questions about existing city processes, programs, or policies, or if you need assistance from staff on any issue, please contact City Hall during normal business hours, and we'll be happy to assist you or answer any questions you may have at that time. The public hearing is designed to provide the public an opportunity to provide testimony and information to the mayor and council regarding the decisions they may be considering. Keep in mind this meeting will be recorded and livestreamed with video and audio. Therefore, all comments relevant to this meeting must be spoken into a microphone. Otherwise, video viewers will not be able to hear you. In the case of a closed session or technical difficulties, some meetings or portions of meetings may not actually be recorded or streamed. The use of cell phones during council meetings is discouraged, so please silence all devices now. Thank you for watching, and thank you for engaging with the city of Nixa. The meeting will begin shortly.
Seth Baylog.
Here.
Sean Lucas.
Here.
Jared Giddens.
Here.
Aaron Peterson.
Here.
Darlene Graham.
Here.
Matt Ogden.
Here.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to the consent agenda. Would anyone like to remove any items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will accept a motion to approve.
So made. Second.
Roll call, please.
Sean Lucas.
Yes.
Jared Giddens.
Yes.
Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
Darlene Graham.
Yes.
Matt Ogden.
Yes.
Seth Baylog.
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to our service awards. We have one service award this month. Brendan Justin in planning and zoning for 10 years. He's worked for like everybody, so I don't know who's gonna...
I get to talk.
Okay.
About him tonight, and I have the pleasure of talking about him for two different reasons. I hired Brendan Justin from the park department. He was working part-time, and he put in for a position I had over at utility billing. I brought him into the office where I found he has the best customer service skills I've ever seen. I've never seen him angry. I've never seen him riled, even during disconnects when he was getting yelled at. He kept his cool and was great. Brendan is very dependable. He has a thirst for knowledge, and he likes to grow and learn. Because of that, he transferred from utility billing over to the planning and zoning department, where Travis stilled him as the code enforcement officer. And from there, he has transferred now. He is a building inspector for the city, and he does a great job every day. I appreciate all his hard work, and I'm just glad that the city has him. He's a great asset for the city.
Well, congratulations, Brendan. And we'll move on to our proclamations. Our first proclamation tonight. Whereas the mission of Nixa High School is to provide a quality, comprehensive education to which all students will acquire the knowledge, skills, and strategies to become independent, productive, and responsible global citizens. And whereas based on the hard work of the students, staff, and administration, the Nixa High School has been awarded the 2022 National Blue Ribbon Award for the second time since 2013. And whereas a national blue ribbon school is recognized for either their outstanding academic achievement or their performance in high academic levels while serving a significant portion of disadvantaged students. And whereas every year the US Department of Education seeks out and celebrates great American schools that demonstrate that all students can achieve high levels, the National Blue Ribbon Award affirms the hard work of educators, families, and communities, creating a safe and welcoming school where students master challenging and engaging content. Whereas the National Blue Ribbon recognition means that Nixa High School is among Missouri's and the nation's highest performing schools. And whereas along with being named a 2022 National Blue Ribbon School, the Nixa Public School District was named a 2022 Missouri Gold Star School. And whereas the city of Nixa urges citizens to recognize this high-performing school and their efforts to provide their students a high-quality education and the tools they need to prosper. Now therefore, I Brian Steele, Mayor for the city of Nixa, do hereby commend Nixa High School for their achievements in recognition of their 2022 National Blue Ribbon recipient. I think we didn't end up getting anybody from the school district to come, so I will accept it on their behalf and provide it to them tomorrow night. And move on to our second proclamation. Deep breath. Whereas November is designated as Native American Heritage Month, this observance commemorates the history, heritage, and culture of Native Americans and Alaskan natives. And whereas these commemorations allow our nation to pause and reflect on the profound way that the first Americans have shaped our country's character and culture as the first stewards of our environment and the early voices of the values that define our nation. And whereas today, their spirit and many contributions continue to enrich our communities and strengthen our country, and we honor their legacy. And whereas, as we celebrate the rich traditions of the original people of what is now the United States, we cannot forget the long and unfortunate chapters of violence, discrimination, and deprivation they have had to endure. And whereas today, as community and tribal leaders, members of our armed forces, and drivers of progress and economic growth, American Indians and Alaskan natives are working to carry forward their proud history. And whereas we owe to the native peoples to continue our efforts to create a community that fully empowers them to live and thrive, promote the visibility of the rich diversity of native cultures, and address the tragedies of missing and killed indigenous peoples and generations of children lost to boarding schools. And whereas during Native American Heritage Month, the city of Nixa recognizes and celebrates the culture and heritage of Native Americans and reaffirms our appreciation of the ideals which our first Americans held dear. Now therefore, I Brian Steele, Mayor for the city of Nixa, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2022 as Native American Heritage Month. We had some chiefs, but the chiefs got caught in transit and their flight got canceled.
Yes, so I'd asked my nation's chiefs to come to accept. They were at town halls in California. Flights got delayed. They were unable to make it.
Well, we'll present it to Becca then on behalf of...
As you may, thank you.
And anyone else of Native American heritage that would like to be involved? We'll just all do a picture. We'll just have a group thing. All right. And now we will move on to our awards and recognitions. The MNL 2022 Innovation Award. To go on my wall of innovation.
All innovation? Well, this year, well, for 2022, the city was granted an innovation award from the Missouri Municipal League for the sensory path that we put in at the gardens at Woodfield. If you guys recall, that path was a big partnership, really. The school district approached us in 2020 during COVID about a possibility of being able to use chalk and things on the path to provide some activity for our early learning center kids. And we're like, yeah, you know, that sounds fantastic. Went through that. It was a big hit down there during that. So we started visiting with them on how we could make it permanent. Were then able to apply for a grant through the Nixa Community Foundation to make it a permanent fixture within the gardens at Woodfield. And so partnered with them. We now have a permanent path that will get updated from time to time. It's spray painted onto the path, and so that will wear off over time, and we will have to redo. But that's our opportunity then to change it and do some different characters or different characteristics within the park at that time. Katie was instrumental in the implementation as she started to design and work up stencils and things for us to do. And then, of course, staff implemented that usage. While we were doing that, then the library jumped in with their story walk, and we were able to add the storyboards there so that as you walk, you can do the activities of the sensory path plus read a book. And so it just makes it a really cool element within the gardens at Woodfield where we can't put traditional equipment and that type of thing due to the topography of that land. And so again, you know, Katie was that big instrumental role in helping us get that implemented within the park. And so now we've got the Missouri Municipal League Innovation Award for 2022. Thank you.
Is that our sixth award in seven years or fifth award in six years or fifth award in seven years?
Fifth.
Our fifth time being recognized for that in the last six years. We had to give Ozark one. They got one last year, so that's okay, though. So we have Cletus with the Nixa Community Foundation along with myself and Jimmy. We're also on the community foundation board, so we'll all take a picture with them. And only one more. All right, we'll move on to Doug Colvin, MPUA Hometown Utilities Award.
That's already on. There we go. Mayor, council, a very own. Doug Colvin recently got an award through the MPUA called the Hometown... I'm sorry, I'll get the name right here in just a second. Called the Hometown Utilities Award. And I'm going to briefly read the press release that MPUA put out. Says, "Colvin has served Nixa since 2004. An 18-year period of leadership that provides a model of the value of local management of a hometown utility. Community leaders cited Doug's leadership for many Nixa utilities' achievements. These include increased performance and proficiency at Nixa's water, sewer, and electric systems, including system improvements that reduced wastewater treatment flows 30% during a period of years when the Nixa's population grew by 60%. Doug also led the development of the 72-acre Nixa solar farm and a sale of transmission assets that contributed to Nixa being able to lower customers' electric rates. In MPUA leadership roles, Doug has served as Chair of the MPUA Association in 2012, after serving the MPUA Association Executive Committee as Treasurer, Secretary, and Vice-Chair. He recently served as the Chair of the MPUA Strategic Planning Committee. He has been a longtime and valuable member of the MPUA Legislative Committee." And then I'll also note, they did make a note that Doug has previously been honored with the MPUA's John Tom Tinsley Distinguished Service Award in 2018, and also the Paul Jensen Individual Achievement Award in 2013. So we're very proud of and very deserving. Doug's very deserving of that award.
You didn't bring your trophy, so you can't take any more pictures. But congratulations, Doug. Doug, well deserved, and we're very proud of all that you do for that organization and all you do for the city. All right, we will move on to our visitor's section. Becca.
No visitors.
We have no visitor scheduled for today. All right, we'll move on to our second reading.
Second reading Council Bill Number 2022-102, in ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa, rezoning the real property generally located at 415 North Main Street from a single-family residential R1 district to a neighborhood commercial NC district.
Mayor, council, good evening. The property owners at 415 North Main Street have applied for a rezone. The property is currently zoned R1 single-family, and they are requesting neighborhood commercial zoning. The subject property is Lot 11 of the McConnell Addition subdivision. It features a single-family home currently on the property that is originally built in 1930. The property owners do plan to convert that into a commercial space. The land uses surrounding the subject property is R1 single-family to the northwest and south. To the east is North Main Street as long... And on the other side of North Main Street is R4 zoning, which is multifamily typically used for duplexes, along with neighborhood commercial zoning, which is where Big Isle Subs is. There's also other land uses similar in the vicinity of this area, of this proposed zoning change that would allow neighborhood commercial to be compliant with that area. Transportation, the subject property is served by North Main Street, which is a collector-level street. Because of the status of the street, it requires a traffic impact study to be performed before redevelopment can occur. In this instance, that would be adding a parking lot because we need a parking lot in order to make it a commercial business. So they wouldn't get a certificate of occupancy until that was put in. The property is serviced by all municipal services, and they are all properly sized and capable of serving a neighborhood commercial development. At the October 3 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, a public hearing was held. Neighbors that are west of, in the neighborhood that is west of this property voiced their concerns about additional traffic to the site, and they also voiced their concern about if this rezone were to occur, that potentially other properties along North Main Street that are available for sale could also be rezoned to commercial. With all things considered, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval to city council for this rezone. Staff also recommends approval. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Any questions? Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
And we will open up a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak to this item, they can do so at this time. And we will close the public hearing. Any further discussion? I will accept a motion to approve.
So made.
Second. Darlene.
Darlene.
Roll call, please.
Jared Giddens.
Yes.
Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
Darlene Graham.
Yes.
Matt Ogden.
Yes.
Seth Baylog.
Yes.
Sean Lucas.
Yes.
And we'll move on to the resolutions.
Resolution Number 2022-105, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with D&amp;E Plumbing and Heating Incorporated for certain repairs to the Highway 14 and Greg Road intersection.
Mayor and council, at the last city council meeting, you did pass an ordinance approving a budget amendment for $127,000 to afford the needed repair work at the Highway 14 and Greg Road intersection. This resolution will allow the city to contract with D&amp;E Plumbing for that $127,000 to perform the needed work to that intersection.
Any questions? Thank you, Travis. And we will open up the public hearing. And close the public hearing. Any further discussion or questions?
One question I do have that's more about the bid process is, have we started going after other things like Springfield Contractors and things like that on their websites for the bidding process? I mean, it's not just planning and development. It's getting very few bids back. It's across the board, so trying to figure out how we can be...
It's my understanding we're now using DemandStar as well as posting on our website current. So we're sort of using DemandStar on that.
The other thing we do is, if we have known local contractors that'll be doing it or ones that have worked for us before, they're on our list. We have a sign up on nixa.com, and all of those vendors are signed up, so they get an automatic email as soon as that goes out. So we try that way as well.
I just, if we can, look into some other options. I just, next year, I would like to see a lot more bids than... And it seemed, I mean, back in 2019, it didn't seem like, it seemed like we had multiple bids for almost every...
Yes, and we have. And we've had those discussions internally as well about Springfield Contractors and some of those other groups that we've talked about. So you will start to see some of those being advertised. But again, I think we're in a different environment today, so we're starting to see much fewer bids and higher bids because of the, quite honestly, they don't need the work right now is what we're hearing. There's a lot of work out there, so we tend to, they tend to be very selective on the jobs that they do bid on. So we do have to expand out and find other avenues to try to solicit bids, so we're definitely looking at that.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All right, I'll accept a motion to approve.
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? All right, move on to the next one.
Resolution Number 2022-106, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with Hanson's Tree Service for brush grinding services.
Brush grinding is a service that the city contracts on a biannual basis. It's a process in which we take all the tree material that is obtained through our electric department tree trimming service, as well as that material taken at the recycle center. It is all stockpiled down at the treatment plant. On a biannual basis, we contract to have all that tub grinded into mulch. That mulch is one of the products that's used to make compost, which is then given back to the citizens of Nixa. So because of that ingredient, we do contract that out every, like I said, on a biannual basis. This year, we had budgeted $20,000. We post that bid for an hourly rate. That contractor will grind that material until, one, we either run out of material or, two, we reach our budget cap, which in this year budgeted at $20,000. We bid it out. Hanson's Tree Service did provide the low bid at $500 per hour, and the city staff is recommending approval of the resolution to authorize Hanson's to provide that tub grinding service for the tree trimming material that we have in stock.
Any questions? Thank you, Travis. And we will open up the public hearing. And close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Accept a motion to approve.
So made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? All right, that was fast. We'll move on to the 2023 Budget Draft and Discussion Update.
Good evening. I have a PowerPoint that kind of recaps what we talked about Thursday and some changes that you all wanted to see implemented, and then there were a few things that I forgot to mention, and then a few things that have come up since then. So, well, we're going to talk about all of that. So just to start out with, a recap on the personnel. We added a 1.5% merit. One of the things I forgot to go over was the benefit rates and how those have changed or not changed. The loggers rate went in the police from 14.3% to 15.1%, and in the general went from 15.2% to 15.4%. So those were the two differences in the loggers rate. Health insurance is no change in our health insurance rates. So that's really great news because a lot of times that can be very costly. So no change there. In our dental envision, we are changing companies. We haven't been happy with the company that we've had, so we're going back to the company that we used last year, and it's a slight decrease in premium. And then one thing that I forgot to mention, in public works, they're kind of a, they're kind of like the centralized employees here at City Hall. There are public works employees that work for all of the departments, and so their personnel expenses are split between electric, water, wastewater, and street, and they're considered public works. And there was an additional personnel request in public works for administrative clerk, but that salary is completely covered by the enterprise funds, so it won't affect the general fund. So that is included in the budget that we talked about on Thursday. Any questions about what we talked about on Thursday as far as personnel goes? Or those changes? Okay, we only had one change in operations. We added $2,000 to the admin budget for a new sign. I was given that directive today. That's the only change in the operations. In capital, here's what we talked about Thursday. We funded the range building, the comprehensive plan, the Cherry Street Stormwater Project, Rotary Pavilion, Rotary Security, and Lights. And I gave you a list of all of the capital projects, so you can kind of see them there. One thing I left out was utility billing projects, and again, oversight on my part, but there are two utility billing projects. One of them is new handheld equipment for meter readers, which is a project that's in this year's budget. We've got the PO for it, but it won't be delivered until next year, so it has to go forward. We've also put four payment kiosks in the budget for next year, and these payment kiosks will make it more convenient for our customers to pay their utility bills. We think we want to put one at the X Center and one either in the vestibule at utility billing or here in City Hall. And then we've talked about putting a couple out in the community, maybe at a convenience store or someplace that's open late that customers can have access to. So we don't know where yet, but we've just talked about those type of options. So the way that works is you contract with an armored car service, and they take care of your cash handling. We're not going to have any of our employees with big piles of cash. And the checks turn into an electronic payment and spit the check right back out to the customer. And it sets us up for when we put AMI metering in place, that kiosk will do a sweep every 15 minutes, and if somebody has put money on their account, it will automatically turn their utilities back on. So that's the advantage to doing it, coupling it with AMI. So it sets us up to be able to do that when we get to that place in the future with the AMI metering. Questions, comments about the kiosks?
Jennifer, do you have those totals? What that would cost?
Yes, it's on your sheet. The total for four kiosks is $118,297. There's some setup and implementation fees in there, $23,000 and some change per kiosk.
So then we don't own the kiosk, it's a kind of a lease program, is that what?
They had a lease option, this is to purchase them.
Purchase them? So what would be the support? Is there a support contract, monthly fee, yearly?
Yes, it comes with maintenance and support. Maintenance and support is $27,000 a year.
Okay. Do we know what that support looks like as far as, I mean, is there a time that we get guaranteed?
If you don't mind.
You hate me right now, don't you? It's okay.
Let me, let me chime in real quick if you don't mind. This is for budgeting purposes, we'll actually have to do an RFP and go out, so this may not necessarily be the, the company that we choose. So we're, this is just to get the money in the budget, so then we'll, when we do an RFP, those will be the kind of the questions that we're looking for whenever we get proposals back from different companies. So we just know that this company would fit with the AMI system we're looking at, so it is an option, but it is not the final selection.
It does, it does list it out, though. Live desk, live help desk support, component repair and replacement, onsite maintenance support, proactive remote monitoring services, antivirus security and patch management services, cellular data service. So, yeah.
So as long as our power, we can put any.
Yeah. So that $118,297, that includes the, the annual fees and all the setup fees and everything, or is that just for the kiosks themselves?
That includes four kiosks, a configuration and customization service, an implementation and deployment service, and one year of maintenance and support.
Just want to make sure we had enough in the budget for it.
Yeah, yep. And they said you can customize, this particular machine partners with Invoice Cloud, who is our payment processor, and so Invoice Cloud talks to our soft, billing software, so, and this machine talks to Invoice Cloud, so we all talk into each other. And so that's why we reached out to them. Like Jimmy said, we would have to go out, you know, for an RFP and just one of the specs would be that it, they have to be compatible with, with what we have, so. But this company, particular company, said they can customize the machine, put logos, custom colors, you can put announcements on the screen, you know, for different, they customize all of that.
And I don't know if you would even know this yet, because in the beginning process of it, but is there anyone locally that uses this company? I mean, I know there's some that do this, but anyone that uses the same, kind of our same setup?
Brian is the one who talked to the guy, and I think he did say there was someone, I can't remember which, which city it was that he talked to. I'm sorry, I don't, I don't remember.
Question we can, yeah, we'll look at that at another time.
Yeah, and, and again, when we do the RFP, that'll be something that we definitely look at with everybody that puts in a proposal.
References and such.
Yep.
Hey, any other questions on that?
On the, the handheld equipment, is that replacements for equipment we already have?
Um, yes, the equipment we have is no longer supported by the software, and the company is making us replace it because they don't have software support for it anymore. They are now, because it's their fault that we don't have it, we've ordered it from them, but that all ended, and so we had to order new equipment. And, oh, any other questions?
Do they have a lifespan on this new equipment, like?
My question would be, can we sell it when we go to AMI here in a couple of years and we don't need the handheld readers anymore?
Yeah, we tried to stretch it out as long as we could, thinking that at some point we wouldn't need it anymore, but it just, it's end of life and not supported anymore, so I don't know the answer to that question, but I can find out.
Can you purchase end of life support?
I'm sorry?
Can you purchase end of lights, end of life support? Typically, you can.
We did, yes, we did.
I guess at the end of the end of life.
We did, yeah, so we are covered until we get this new.
He's got like, all the abacus beads have broken off the ones we have now.
We also found out late last week that we were awarded a grant for the police department, and they had a project already ready to go to fund with that, and it's a drone project. I don't know of Chief, if you want to talk about that, but they, we're getting $5,000. The drone itself is eight, $8,755, so the net expenditure would be $3,755 for the drone.
Yes, we, we applied for an equipment grant with a cap of $5,000, knowing that we would, we were potentially looking at a nine to $10,000 drone, but we thought this might be a great opportunity to get funded. We've tried for, equipped this particular equip, equipment grant for several years in a row, and we weren't able to be funded. So we were fortunate enough to be funded this time, and we have a great project. The drone will be capable of quite a few things. It's going to come with a loudspeaker, a light, it'll have thermal, and it'll have flare as well. And so it's got a lot of capabilities that our current drone does not have, so we're excited to potentially get this thing into service. But we will have to cover the remainder of the amount that, as Jennifer said, through regular funding with the $5,000 grant, taking up the vast majority of that.
So that was kind of the recap on the capital. Didn't do any changes to the debt. In the transfers line, we added the fund, the ARPA funds to be used for the Cherry Street project. And then, anytime you make changes to personnel or operations, that affects that admin fee and interdepartmental transfer number, so that's going to change and fluctuate as the changes are made to those different lines. On the restricted reserves balance, again, as changes to personnel and operating expenses are made, operating reserve restrictions will change. And then here's the doozy. The beginning cash balances, I forgot to subtract out the money that we'll be spending on the Macaulay Park playground by the end of this year, which is close to $1 million. So the beginning cash balances that we looked at on Thursday did not include that, but the sheet you have in front of you does. So that sort of makes that ending balance a lot less than what we left it with on Thursday. So I do apologize for that. But that's why we talk about the budget for about two months, so that we can work out these kinks, because we're always going to come across something that we've forgot to put in. So that leaves us with the conclusion of, in the general fund, and this number is different now, because I made a change right before I came in here. The ending unrestricted cash balance is 937 something, right? I don't have it in front of me. The operations percentage of revenue still should be the same, I believe. Maybe it's a little different because I changed the personnel, I changed the dental and vision rates right before I came in here. So the general fund is going to be a little different. In the street fund, the ending unrestricted cash balance, again, it's going to be a little bit different, close to 892,764, with the percentage of revenue at 33.71. Electric fund, ending unrestricted cash balance at $10,315,911, and the percentage there is 87.29%. And in the water fund, ending unrestricted cash balance, $1,583,562, and the percentage is 90.10%. And in the wastewater fund, the ending unrestricted cash balance is $2,013,341, and operations as a percent of revenue is 61.89%. So depending on what number you, you want to be happy with in the general fund ending balance, I need to talk about some capital, maybe doing some things differently. I don't know if you want to cut some, if you want to use ARPA funds for some. Got some decisions to make. These are the general fund capital projects that are included in this budget.
And which, which ones did we add last time?
We added the firing range building. We added, the drone has been added, but I, that's a grant, we kind of have to spend that money on an equipment purchase, right? I mean, we added Rotary Park Pavilion, Rotary Park Lights and Security, Comprehensive Plan, and we added Cherry Street Stormwater, but we decided to fund that with ARPA money.
So I think what I proposed at the last meeting was we spent five to 600,000 because we had 2 million in reserve, in unrestricted reserves, so now we were, now we're at?
Well, when we ended Thursday, it was 1.5.
Right.
And now.
So now we're 1.5 minus whatever amount we end up spending, so decided we're still comfortable, instead of having 1.5 million, if we're comfortable with having 937,000 instead. And we do have, we still do have the ARPA funds that we could utilize for some of these as well, I think.
Yes, and, but I will just mention, we do have a few grants that we're going to bring in before council over the next month or so, that could require a match, that we could utilize those ARPA funds as well, because I know that was one of the directions that we received from councils, to look for those matching grant opportunities. We have found a few that we're going to be bringing to you probably over, like you said, over the next month, the two months. So that's just something to keep in the back of your mind as you're looking at the ARPA funds, so. I don't, I don't have those totals yet, but we're probably looking at anywhere from a million to a million and a half that we could utilize for grant matching opportunities over the next month or two.
And the total we have here before us is correct as far as the, what the ending projected ending balance is of 3.28 million for ARPA?
Mm-hmm, on that, on your budget dashboard, yes.
Yeah. So you're saying that would come out of the three point?
That's correct. Yeah, so we still have some funds there, but I just want to make sure that you guys, everyone was aware of those possibilities. Yep.
So I was still comfortable with it, the way it is, I think, after our discussion at the last meeting about adding these projects, they were all very worthwhile projects, and we still do have the 3.2 million dollars of ARPA funds, which are somewhat unrestricted. Some restrictions, but not as many as some of the other things.
Yeah, the latest, the latest change from the US Treasury was that we can use those ARPA funds for any governmental service, so anything that falls under the umbrella of governmental service, we can utilize those for. So it is much broader, broader use than when we first started out and we first received those funds, so. And then also, just to remind you as well, we still have some cash reserves as well. Yep.
And there's a chance the Comprehensive Plan could be $135,000 cheaper.
True.
It's true.
We do have that.
Did you have any other slides?
Hmm.
Jennifer?
That's it.
Oh, yeah, okay. People are thinking and mulling, so we.
If, if you'd like.
Sit here for a minute while people think and mull, and the rain subsides.
Yeah, and just as a reminder, as you're looking at that list, some of those projects that we are doing, we are utilizing some of our savings accounts for, that we set aside for those purposes. The downtown design, wayfinding signs, we're going to take out of the economic development funds that we set aside for that purpose, the trail, and then we have, sorry, I'm working down the list there.
Yeah, it's on your sheet here.
Okay, perfect, and so those are good.
So you don't have to try to remember it all, Jimmy.
And then the other thing I'd ask for, for next time, was to itemize the vehicles. I know we're rolling them all up into our lease payment now, but having them itemized, I think, is a beneficial thing so that we understand what they all are and what goes, what's rolling into that.
Yeah, we'll be bringing those back. I've already had a chance, already had a chance to visit with Chief. I haven't had a chance with Doug yet, because that was a last minute thing, but we'll have it here for the next meeting.
So we've got two months to do this.
That's right.
We've got plenty of time to come back and do that later.
That's right, so we will have it for you.
Anything else? Any other questions or thoughts?
I'm going to ask, I'm probably going to ask the dumb guy a question, but we have a chipper in here for 80 grand, but we're doing a brush grinding at the compost facility. Is there any economies of scale with that, or are those completely separate?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm not sure I caught the last part. I know, I, I know it's about the chipper, and then also, we do brush grinding.
Yeah.
They, yeah, they're both for chipping. The chipper that we have, that, that this is replacing, is the one that we actually use out in the field a lot of times while we're actually trimming and we're chipping, you know, on someone's property so we can keep it all cleaned up. The stuff that is, is out there is just brush that we also haul out there, as well as all the brush that comes to the compost facility. We haul all that out there, and it's all unchipped, and so we'll run that through the tub grinder.
Could you?
We have two piles, really.
Could you combine the piles reasonably, or is that just a different expense?
Well, in a way, we do. So, I mean, the stuff that we grind, with the stuff that we do with our grinder, it does go out there to that. The, the difference with the everything, the volume that's out at the treatment plant, it's just, it's way more than we could do with our whole behind chipper. This tub grinder is huge, it's the size of a semi trailer. You actually, you know, take logs that are, so.
I guess what I'm asking is, could you take the, the items that you're, you're getting at the, locally, and take it to that site and have it all done at once, twice a year?
We could, yes, yeah. Without, without having a brush grinder, we would just have to, a lot of times, it's, it's, where the most convenience comes in with the one that we use with the tree crew is, as you know, there's, we have a lot of trees along power lines that are back behind houses, and they have to climb fences, and so a lot of times dragging some of that brush out of there is kind of cumbersome, it takes a lot of time and a lot of labor. But could it be done? Yes, it could.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? All right, thank you Jennifer. We'll come back and discuss this again. Same place, two weeks from now. All right, that's the end of our agenda for this evening. Anything else from staff?
I'd like to remind you guys that Thursday night, from 4:30 to 7:30, we will have our first open house to discuss the Oaf property, North Parcel that we're in design for. So we'll have some concepts there and be taking a public comment, so if you have time to stop by, we would love to show you those concepts and give you that opportunity to comment as well.
Is there something going on Friday as well, Matt?
Yeah, Friday's spooktacular.
There we go.
Dress up and come on out. Love to have you there, too. We're hoping to be outside, weather permitting.
And then tomorrow night is the state of the community dinner banquet.
All right, anything else from council?
This Saturday, we, we do have the prescription Doug Take Back Event. Officer Forgy and myself will be at the library center, the library center, the library behind McDonald's. The Nixa Library, yes. So you can bring any expired, unused, over the counter, or prescription medications, anything, no aerosols, no needles, but everything else is fair game, so. We'll be there from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Very good. Anything else? Now I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for having me.